Oh shoot.
Ten, five, and down to the five yard line finally tackled by the defense. He is wide open in the flat and they were able to get the ball to him.
Luckily, the Bulldogs are now in striking distance to score a touchdown.
Yes, they are, Andrew. It's first a goal from the five and then they can get the tying touchdown. And let's tie this baby up. Tim Meyer.
Hey, is this Tim Meyer?
I said Tim Meyer.
It's true here. Hey, is the MIT TV broadcasting the game tonight?
Yeah, we're broadcasting the game tonight, kid.
Tim, we're live!
Yeah, I was just wondering if you knew how to watch the game live?
Sure, I know how you can watch the game live. You got your phone on you?
Yeah.
Well, listen to this.
The MIT TV broadcasts Romeo High School sporting events live so you don't have to miss a minute of the action. Just download the YouTube app on your smartphone or television. Type "at the MIT TV" in the search bar. Click on our channel, then the "Live" tab to find all previous and upcoming live events, including sports. And don't forget to subscribe.
No, thanks, Tim. I really owe you... Sit there.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for tuning in to this exciting TV broadcast. We'll see you tomorrow, the day after that, and the day after that, because that's the way we broadcast news, and that's the way you consume entertainment. Won't change anytime soon. For the MIT TV, I'm Tim Meyer.
Tim Meyer.
You, Tim Meyer.
I said, "Tim Meyer."
They said you were coming.
What they say, true?
See for yourself.
What's this?
They call it a podcast studio.
The heck's a podcast studio?
It's a studio for podcasting. Superior sound visuals, allowing the viewer to either watch or listen for an intimate experience of long-form content.
Long-form content?
Without any restrictions from any cable or network provider, there's no telling how long it can be.
Is it affordable?
You have no idea.
What's he doing?
Found him here in the studio. Recent college graduate trying to start a podcast with his friends after debating the existence of God and women's sports.
How come I can't hear him?
Steven builds a spy gun through the intergalactic satellite system. Also buy my merch with my special creator code.
How long before this becomes accessible?
It already has.
If you or someone you know is looking to start a podcast for business or personal use, look no further than the MIT TV. With hourly rates starting as low as 160 an hour, the MIT TV grants access to state-of-the-art podcast studio, allowing you to record perfect audio amazing video for your audience. Contact the MIT TV today at mit.tvpodcast@gmail.com.
This job stinks.
Call the, uh, meeting to order, uh, for July 10th at 7:00 PM. If the... I was gonna do the pledge of allegiance.
No.
I guess we are going to do a public hearing to discuss 1506-532-Mile Road, Does anyone want to make a comment? What?
Will you read this?
You can hold for just one sec, sir.
Oh. The applicant is applying for special land use in accordance with Section 46-393. Special land use that are allowed in the industrial zone district. The ordinance allows marijuana retailer, medical marijuana grower, marijuana safety compliant facility, marijuana processor, retailer, medical marijuana provisioning center or secure transporter which are used only to be permitted within the industrial zone district, subject to the special land use approval.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Stephen Colano on behalf of Michigan Aspire Four, Graham's Cannabis Romeo currently. Uh, just wanted to say first and foremost, thank you for, uh, having us in your nice village, beautiful village, uh, the last few months. We've really, uh, really learned a lot about the village, the history, things like that. And, um, we're proud, we could proudly say we're dedicated to this village, and we want to make, uh, an improvement. Uh, since we've got into this, uh, new space, uh, it was the Happy Days Romeo, so we, you know, purchased the license, we got that transferred. It's been one nightmare after the other. Uh, one of the things is, uh, there's a heating and cooling business next door. Uh, they were getting a lot of smell, which we couldn't understand because, you know, we own a few of these things, and everything's sealed tight, locked tight in the vault, you know, airtight, and it was just ridiculous. Every day, we smell it, we smell, so end up putting a 4,000 CFM fan, and now it's just like very loud, and the customers are, "What? Can't hear you," and it's just, it's just not what we thought it was going to be. Um, there's a few other things, um, that we, that we, uh, seen that we didn't like, and it's just, it's becoming one problem after the other. Well, we saw the "For Lease" sign on the strip, 32 Mile and, you know, close to Powell right next to the mechanic shop. And we said, "Hey, what if we could move it there?" You know, "Let's, let's give it a chance." Uh, maybe spruce up 32 Mile, it's a little bit dark right now, maybe we could spruce it up. Uh, we're, you know, when we do our, when we do our shops, we make sure they're beautiful, they're big, they're lovely, they're full of items, they're, they're well-priced, very competitive. We also have a cultivation and processing facility in Warren, Michigan, so we produce a lot of the products that we sell over there, and we're, we're, we're able to afford, um, our customers very good prices, so when they spend $20 with us, they're getting probably twice as much than the next guy or a city over or whatever. So, we're, we want to bring that to the masses, we want to bring that to the people, and we, we, we really love Romeo. I mean, I, we think 32 Mile is just an excellent, excellent thoroughfare for this business, and it would definitely give it some life. Um, the 24 Hours is working really, really well. Uh, we're getting a lot of people coming in, 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 a lot of professional people, a lot of nurses, a lot of people that, you know, do late-night medical treatments. Thank you, they need their meds, you know, it helps them sleep, so that's, that's really, but it's just the exposure, it's, you know, in the back, so we, we really like to come in the front. We know the capital investment that it's gonna take, but we're dedicated to the village, and it's just not, you know, we, it's not the first thing that we want to do, it's not gonna be the last. We want to do a lot for the village, and we want to be here for a while. And we would really appreciate if you guys could look at this, um, proposal and make something really nice on that strip. I know, I know there's a, a, a survey, that's what we were looking at, the, the rules, but we clearly met that in the survey. Uh, there's three different variations. Um, so, just, uh, thank you for everything, yes or no? Thank you for everything. We really appreciate you guys. Thank you.
All right, anyone else care to make a comment? All right. Then I am going to close...
Adjourn.
I didn't hear.
Adjourn.
I'm, all right, I'm going to adjourn the, uh, special...
Public.
Public hearings, and we will return to our regular agenda for the seat.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I thought there were a journey.
A motion.
We, we need a vote.
A journey.
That is what it is.
Do we need a motion to adjourn then?
No, we got a motion to close the public hearing in a second.
Mellon?
Yes.
Webb?
Yeah.
Minton?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Bill Parker?
We're voting to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Justin Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Grandstaff?
Yes.
All right. We will start off with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we get a roll call, please?
Hale?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Grandstaff?
Here.
Webb?
Yeah.
Hall?
Here.
Justin Parker?
Present.
Minton?
Here.
Mellon?
Here.
Phil Parker?
Yep.
All right, could I get approval of the minutes from the June 5th meeting? Is that anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Uh, can we have a, uh, vote, please?
Hale?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Mellon?
Yes.
Minton?
Yes.
Justin, Bill Parker?
Yes.
Justin Parker?
Yes.
Grandstaff?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Webb?
Yes.
Okay. Could I have approval of the agenda, please?
Make a motion to approve the agenda. Uh, I'd like to table the new business, 10A, being that we just got the information presented tonight at the table.
Say. I have, I would like to, uh, request to add communications, um, after, number five, after approval of the agenda, before public comment.
I would support that in my motion. Would you still approve with adding communications?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll get a vote.
We're taking 10A off and we're adding communications.
Adding communications after 5:00. So next, and then tabling new business till next month. New business 10A.
Get all that?
I did. Justin Parker?
Yes.
Bill Parker?
Yeah.
Minton?
Yes.
Mellon?
Yeah.
Webb?
Yes.
Grandstaff?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Okay, we have a request for some communication. Do you have...
I am in receipt of, um, several letters from residents, um, that I received today, so they were not included in your packet. But these are residents that were not able to attend the eve, this evening, but have requested that their, um, letters be, um, part of our public record here, and have asked that I can read these, so if they're, you guys are good? Yep. I know there was a couple other ones that were laying here on our, on our table when we came here, but I have different ones, I don't have those. So I have, um, I've got five, I believe, here. All right, I'll try to read fast. All right, so the first one I have says, "Good evening, my name is Melissa Folino, and I live at 253 Chandler Street. Though I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting, I feel compelled to share my thoughts regarding the SLU request for a bed and breakfast at 273 Chandler Street. 273 Chandler Street has been referred to as a historic building on more than one occasion. Many in support of the SLU request have asked, 'If not a bed and breakfast, then what?' I ask that the planning commission not lose sight of the fact that the property in question is a single-family home on an R1 residential street. While the Gray House is a historic Romeo property, its historic nature should bear no weight when it comes to upholding village ordinance. The planning commission shouldn't be making concessions in order to fast-track a business operation in the middle of a neighborhood simply because the owner has invested money into preserving a historic Romeo property. It is our duty as property owners to maintain our homes, historic or not. Though I think the Gray House has beautiful curb appeal, what Mr. Wells did in terms of beautifying the exterior, for example, was merely his duty as a homeowner. I don't feel that investing and maintaining one's property should result in any special consideration for being awarded an SLU. Chandler Street was named after George Chandler, the man who built my house. Similarly to the Gray House, there is plenty of historical significance associated with my home as well. Nevertheless, no matter how special to Romeo its history may or may not be, the responsibility of maintaining the home, ensuring that it doesn't fall into a state of disrepair, is mine and my husband's, not the neighborhoods, not the villages, and certainly not the planning commissions. Our investment is our financial responsibility, for better or for worse. I'm not sure why the Gray House's future needs to be reinvented or made the problem of anyone other than the owners. Planning Commission, our laws, ordinances, and standards should make up the compass that drives your conduct, your decisions, and your votes. Have the confidence to believe and stand by those guidelines. Last month upon roll call for the June 5th meeting, the quorum was declared. You are well within your legal rights to conduct your meeting and vote on matters at hand. Though the applicant's legal representation, Mr. Linnell used phrases like "the applicant deserves due process," and "my client is entitled to the full planning commission," in an attempt to delay a vote on this matter. The decision to postpone the vote was a mere courtesy to the applicant and disservice to the opposing village residents. Mr. Linnell also said, "At some point, my client chooses to seek a vote before a less-than-full planning commission that is also his right." It seems as though the board is being made to feel like they'll have legal repercussions if the applicant's wishes are being honored one way or another. However, I urge you to consider that there may be consequences if our ordinances aren't upheld. We will have opened the door for residents to feel that ordinances are only suggestions and not laws that need to be followed. It is the duty of the planning commission to uphold our village's ordinances, as well as maintain our master plan, so we can ensure and preserve the quality of life that our residents expect and deserve. Over 50 Romeo residents have signed a petition against the applicant's SLU request because it is abundantly clear that in its present state, the applicant's request does not satisfy our village ordinance. The neighborhood is fully aware that bed and breakfasts are currently allowed in R1 residential, multifamily, and the office district. However, an applicant's request for an SLU must first meet the bare minimum requirements for consideration, and as it stands, the application in question violates our village ordinance. Based on this fact alone, the decision to deny the SLU should be a simple one. Okay, sorry, that was, that was long. Um, I have one from Tina Griffith at 240 Minut Street. "Thank you for providing the opportunity to have my public comment read tonight. I have not been able to make it to the planning commission meetings in person, including this one, but have been able to watch them online. I oppose the approval of the special land use bed and breakfast application of 273 Chandler by applicant Dale Wells. I'd like to preface the reason for my opposition by acknowledging the community's previous public comment statements. I respect the residents' input and opinions. They are valid and hold a measure of evidentiary value, especially to those who have previous bed and breakfast experience in the village, as well as those who have experience and knowledge in the hospitality environment. I also want to commend Dale on his commitment to restoring this home. As an old-home lover and restorer, I appreciate his decis, his dedication. However, to those who serve on this planning commission and are public servants to this community, it is your role and responsibility to make decisions based on policy. As a former Macomb County government employee for over 20 years, working as both a human resource and labor relations consultant, and a case manager in education and training and welfare reform, I understand and have experience interpreting, adhering to, and executing public policy. Based on Section 46-153 Special Land Uses, Bed and Breakfast Establishments A1 of the Village of Romeo Ordinance, the policy is subject to the follows, the following. The rooms utilized for lodging purposes shall be part of the primary residential use and shall not have been specifically constructed for rental purposes. Based on Dale's submitted application, his request does not meet this criteria. His application shows that construction will have to occur in order to meet this ordinance criteria. Therefore, the rooms being proposed for rental purposes do not exist at this time. Furthermore, a letter submitted to this board by Romeo Village Clerk Jamie Lucero dated May 28th, 2025, shows that the property is not currently being used as a primary residence. The interior will have to be specifically constructed for rental purposes, as the walk-through visit of the property clearly shows that specific construction needs to take place in order for the home to function as a bed and breakfast. Based on this, the application does not meet criteria for approval and therefore needs to be denied. I do want to mention, as someone who has owned a business and is investing my life's savings into the restoration and renovation of my historic home in the village, I understand Dale's need to gain approval of this application before he invests any more money into the property. However, if this application is approved with the knowledge that it does not meet the ordinance requirements, then anyone in this village has the ability to apply for this type of special land use permit and argue grounds for speedy approval. I ask that this planning commission do to, do its due diligence and adhere to the village ordinance and deny this application. If in the future the ordinance does not meet the needs of the community, then it is recommended that the ordinance be changed appropriately via approval from this board." All right, those are the long ones. I got a couple more. Thank you. Um, this one is from Richard Corey at 322 Chandler Street. "Statements to the planning commission. Good evening, I'd like to respectfully voice my opposition regarding the special land use application for a bed and breakfast being proposed at 273 Chandler Street, as the application simply does not meet the requirements set forth in our zoning ordinance." as the application simply does not meet the requirements set forth in our zoning ordinance. The home located at 273 Chandler Street, better known as the Gray House, is not in a habitable state as it currently stands. In order for a bed and breakfast to exist, bedrooms, bathrooms, and other spaces must be constructed in order for lodging to occur. This is in violation of our ordinance. Ordinances and laws exist for a reason, to maintain order, ensure fairness, and protect the integrity of our village. They are the framework that keeps our community running smoothly and preserves the character and safety of our neighborhoods. When an application that clearly violates these standards is granted, it sets a dangerous precedent. It signals that our ordinances are optional rather than essential. This undermines public trust, invites inconsistency, and makes it difficult to deny future requests that fall short of compliance. I urge the commission to consider the ramifications that would ensure, not only if this SLU were to be granted, but the long-term implications of disregarding the rules designed to serve us all." All right, I have two other ones that are short. I thank you guys for your patience.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
We all come flooding in today, and I was like, I had to read all of this. What? All right, "To the Planning Commission Board, good evening. I am writing this letter in opposition of the proposed Chandler Street bed and breakfast. As many residents have expressed, I too believe that the proposed scale of this property is not harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood and would negatively impact the quaint vibe Romeo has always been known for and so proud of. It is my understanding that the village clerk and building inspector have determined that the plans do not meet all the standards of the ordinance. This issue has been ongoing for over a year. If the current bed and breakfast ordinance currently leaves so much room for interpretation and subjectivity, which appears that it does, this matter should be tabled until the ordinance can be revisited and written so that the standards are clear." That one is from Lindsay Leonard. She's a village resident. And I have one more email that I received this afternoon from Michael Hummon. He says, "Hello, my name is Michael Hummon. My family and I live on Prospect Street. In regards to the SLU request for a bed and breakfast at the Gray House on Chandler Street, we discourage a decision that goes against the village ordinance. We have serious concerns about the long-term impact of changing zoning for this historical home. Once this property is rezoned for business or rental use, there is no guarantee that future owners will maintain it as a bed and breakfast. If the venture fails, the property could be used for other commercial purposes that may not align with the character of our village or respect the historic significance of the home. It is in the best interest of our community to preserve the historic nature of this home and maintain current zoning to ensure its protection for future generations." Okay, there we go. Thank you. I appreciate, I would just remind everyone that I, these are not my opinions, these are not my statements, these are all just ones that I've received in email forms, or, so, just...
Sarah, I know we've, we've got three others sitting here, one of which says, "Please read." The other two, were those just communication to the council or to the commission, or were those asked to be read also?
They were all asked to be read.
Okay.
Are you reading?
I don't read.
Read? Go ahead.
I can read whatever you, do you want to take a break?
Okay.
Okay, this is from Joan Cummins at 322 Benjamin. "The Gray House bed and breakfast would be a wonderful asset to the village. At a time when the village has been strapped for cash, this project is a godsend, one that most communities would rally around and be grateful for. Mr. Wells has paid great attention to the details of preserving the home's historical integrity. As a resident of the village, I appreciate his investments and look forward to having the opportunity to offer the charm of, and hospitality of such a grand home and to visit, visiting family and friends. The benefits of the village far outweigh the what-if scenarios. As you drive down Main Street, you will notice some new businesses are opening. The village needs a place for lodging, and I am certain that the Gray House will represent the village well and will be good, will be a good neighbor to those it surrounds." Okay, the second one is from Andrea St. Laurent, and she put two addresses, 170 Pleasant and 262 Fair Growth. "Hello, I am so sorry that I am unable to attend the meeting in person. I attended last month's meeting and I talked with you regarding the value and the type of business that the bed and breakfast would bring to the village and dispel from, dispel some of the myths and rumors regarding the scar tactics that were stated about trafficking, et cetera. Today I wanted to talk about preservation. The Romeo residents are expecting you to enforce our ordinance, but the expectation is that you're doing so with a strong understanding of the historic value of buildings and with the effort not to deny, but to work with applicants to get things done and to save the history of Romeo. This board has the authority and responsibility to preserve Romeo's history while shaping its future. This isn't about just who's in the room today, it's about the hundred years from now, future generations being able to see the history of Romeo as we've been able to enjoy it. This board has the ability to read as deeply or openly into each other's words definitions. You have the job of making these decisions, but as the Village of Romeo, we all come here for the historic culture, and I would ask that this board do everything in their power to assist in maintaining this historic site as was discussed at the last month's meeting. The other options are quite, quite bleak. I don't think anyone wants to see it turned into a group home, and I don't think anyone wants to see it in despair and torn down to have six new homes put up on the property. The idea of someone purchasing this property and turning it into a single-family home is not realistic. It hasn't happened so far. I strongly encourage this board to work to be a part of our community and to work with the property owner to make this happen. I understand that there's some people that do not want, but there is a lot of people that do, and they're coming here month after month and speaking to you. This is good for Romeo, this is good for our history." And the last one is just residents of Romeo, and I think it's attached, it's the petition that's attached. "Dear Planning Commission Member, Attached, please find the petition regarding the special land use permit application for the bed and breakfast operation at 273 Chandler Street, Romeo, Michigan, 48065. Fifty-three Village Romeo residents/registered voters have signed this petition in opposition to the applicant's request to have a special land use permit approved in order to construct and operate a bed and breakfast operation at 273 Chandler Street. We, the undersigned petitioners, are all in agreeance that the potential construction and operation of a bed and breakfast at the afforeminated property is inconsistent with the Village of Romeo's master plan. Also, the proposed bed and breakfast would violate numerous Village of Romeo ordinances and will detract from the harmony of the pearly residential surrounding neighborhood. Furthermore, we all believe in the urgency to protect and maintain our neighborhood and small-town way of life by ensuring our local ordinance are judiciary-upheld and enforced. Therefore, your petitioners respectfully request the Village of Romeo Planning Commission opposed to the applicant's request for a special land use permit for the propose of constructing and operating a bed and breakfast operation and recommend that the application be denied." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will get to Chandler Street later in the meeting, so... Right now, I'm opening for public comment. Does anyone wish to address the Planning Commission?
Good evening. Before I start, I'd just like to say thank you very much for taking the time to read the letters that were sent in for folks who couldn't be here tonight. And if it, if it wasn't clear, and I hope you're all in receipt of it, but the petition did have fifty-three signed names from Romeo residents, taxpayers. Franco Filino, 253 Chandler Street. The petition has fifty-three signatures of Romeo residents, voters, and taxpayers. "Good evening. My neighbors and I have been opposing the proposed B&amp;B for the last fourteen months. This commission has more than enough information to deny the SLU application for 273 Chandler Street. The application should have been denied last month, but an attorney from outside our village was allowed to intimidate and pressure this board into feeling like it didn't have the legal right to conduct a business on the matter, and he succeeded. If this, if this type of behavior and interaction, our, if this is the type of behavior and interaction our village leadership is presented with even before the SLU is granted, I sincerely hope it is clearly understood that you can most likely expect more of the same or worse interactions after the SLU is granted for the B&amp;B. Contrary to some of the statements made, there is no legitimate need for temporary lodging in Romeo. There may be a want, but there is no need. Our ordinance requires a bona fide need in order for this to be approved. Yet every B&amp;B in this village has, this village has hosted in recent history, has eventually closed its doors once the novelty wore off. The Brab House has been for sale for over five months with a sale price reduction two and a half months ago, yet nobody has purchased the property to start a B&amp;B, to start a B&amp;B because there is no legitimate need for this type of activity in the village, let alone in the middle of a residential neighborhood. This business model cannot survive here. Our village clerk and building inspector have stated that this property is nowhere near ready to be considered for an SLU. Yet, we continue to lack the gumption to just deny the application so we can all move on with our lives. As for everyone who is asking about what will happen to the Gray House if it doesn't become a B&amp;B, to be honest, that issue belongs to one person in this room and one person alone, and it needs to stop being made an issue for the rest of us. Hugh Gray built the property 153 years ago as a single-family home. The solution is simple. Either the house should be restored as a single-family home and sold, or stop trying to sell it for a million dollars in its current condition. Please stop allowing this issue to be made the neighborhood's problem. You have each member provided a copy of a petition opposing this B&amp;B with fifty-three signatures from village residents, voters, and taxpayers. We all agree an operation of this scale and nature violates our village ordinances and will not be a harmonious addition to our neighborhood. We all expect this commission to execute its duties tonight and deny this application so we can all go back to our lives and stop wasting our time with this nonsense. Please do what you have been appointed to do tonight and uphold our ordinance." Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Kaufman, village resident. As a village resident, I urge the Planning Commission to follow our zoning ordinances and deny this special land use request. This is a commercial operation, not a modest bed and breakfast, and it brings transient traffic into a family neighborhood. The ordinance exists to protect the character and safety of our communities like ours, and they should be upheld. Thank you.
I'm also up here to ask you to do your job, keep your personal opinions out of your decision. Some have said that we need a bed and breakfast, they'd like to see one. But the bottom line is, the ordinance states that it needs to be a residential home and lived in before it can be considered, and, and it clearly doesn't meet that right now. And for what it's worth, from what I understand, Mr. Wells has owned this for a very, very long time, and it went to rack and ruin under his ownership. And he went in and supposedly had to gut the inside, which people who I've talked to have been on a five-dollar tour that I guess they were doing a while back and said that clearly didn't need to be gutted. So, you know, so many people are claiming he's being so altruistic with having a historic property, but he didn't have any respect for that property for many, many, many years. So I'm just begging you, please, let's just uphold our ordinance. That's your job, and that's what everyone is expecting you to do. Thank you.
Real quick, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Sharon Smith, I'm a resident.
Hello, my name's Sally Hurley. My husband and I live on East Sinclair Street, and I'm commenting tonight to voice concern about the plans for the house on Chandler Street and their request for an SLU. My main concern is going against village ordinances and the precedent set for the future if we go against ordinances now, and I hope you'll let our ordinances guide your votes. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniel Goch. I'm a resident here in Romeo. I'm at 245 Chandler Street, so just two houses down from the Gray House. Bottom line up front, with anything, you know, if there is a policy or procedure or an ordinance, I just ask that you guys just do the due diligence to make sure that it follows that. If it doesn't, clearly stated. Before coming to Romeo, I purchased our home with my wife and I and our three kids about a year and a half ago. I looked for about six years or so before coming to the state of Michigan, I'm from Oregon, and I kept looking in Romeo specifically and on Chandler. I actually put in a bid, I actually saw a couple individuals in the audience where I've seen their home listed for sale, but I chose Chandler specifically because I knew that the middle school was being demolished, it was a green space, family homes and all that kind of stuff. And I specifically chose Chandler for single-family home, R1 residential. Wanted to grow my family after serving twenty years in the Army. This specific location, I think a bed and breakfast, you know, it could sound great, awesome for, for the village, but if there's already an ordinance applied, then the ordinance needs to change. You know, I'd love to keep my family close-knit with my neighbors. Not a lot of traffic, going with the Gray House, two houses down, so I currently oppose this application. Thank you.
Nathan Bartholomew, village resident. I'm also a trustee for the village. I'm still in support of this bed and breakfast. I think it'd be a great asset to the community, I think it'd be great for the businesses in downtown. A lady from my church, and she attends church with me in Romeo, she lives out on 37 Mile Road, Northern Bruce Township. And she said, "Man, if this goes through, it'd be great. I can bring my whole family because they're from all over the United States." Her house is too small to have them all there, so she said it'd be perfect. She really hopes that this happens, and I think, again, it would be, I agree with everything that Ms. St. Laurent said too in her letter. And please approve this. Thanks.
Okay. No further comments? We will ask for the... Yes, we will close the public comment at this time.
I have, I have no report.
No report from you? Do we have a CBA?
I have no report also. We have a...
All right. Unfinished business? Capital improvement plans? Have we received anything? Do we need, I do not think we need to do anything, to be honest with you.
You want to talk, Jamie?
Yeah. About that, so...
The capital improvement plan has, has been done by HRC. At some point, it will come to you guys, but it has to go to the Board of Trustees first so they can see what's been identified in the village so that, in a way, the trustees can put a hierarchical order to what they believe should be addressed first, and then you guys are building it out from there. So, at least that's my understanding, I could be wrong. But at the very least, I know I'm not wrong on this, the trustees need to see it first before it comes back. The draft, which is basically the whole thing now, it's over two hundred pages, has finally been sent to us, but it just, we can't give it to you guys just yet. It needs to go before the main body, before it comes back to you guys. So, the hopes are that it's on this month. I know there's a couple different things that need to be added to it. So if we get a finalized draft and the trustees can get it this month, then it'll come to you guys next month. If not, then you're probably, you're likely looking at September before you guys are going to get eyes on it. So that's, that's kind of where it stands now.
All right.
Do we need to just table that?
Postpone.
Postpone.
Just postpone until we have an update.
Okay, next item is...
I'll make a motion to postpone the capital improvement plan until the following meeting.
Support? Can we just do a all-in-paver?
We have a vote, please?
Minton?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mellon?
Yeah.
Webb?
Yeah.
Justin Parker?
Yes.
Bill Parker?
Yeah.
Fowler?
Yes.
Grandstaff?
Yes.
Yes. I got it.
Okay, short-term rental ordinance? We have a proposed... copy that we voted on, you voted on last month, I'm not here. Apparently...
Bill? If I could, real... So, we, we looked at this and made motion on it in February. There was no motion made at that time to recommend this to council. So this commission has to make an official recommendation and vote to send this to council. So this is what we've already looked at, we already approved in the, was it the February 6th meeting of this year, but there was no motion made to send it to council. So, if we still are in support, we need to make a motion to do so.
Are you making a motion that we...
I was going to let someone else make a motion if they wanted to.
Before you go too far.
Does he need a motion first before?
You need a motion first, but I just wanted to let you know I've got questions because I wasn't here in February, so.
All right, so you've made the motion, can we have a second?
You didn't make a motion.
There was no motion made.
I'll make a motion to send it to council.
You make a motion to send it to council? Can I get a second?
I will second that.
Thank you.
Before the vote, I have questions. Yeah, you have a motion and a second.
Janice, your second?
Yes.
That you supported.
Is this not considered exclusionary zoning? Beginning and end, first sentence says they're not allowed anywhere. You put that in a mobile home zone, you put that in a zoning ordinance to eliminate a mobile home park, you're going to lose in court. Every day of the week, all day long. You can't exclude every use in every zoning ordinance from everything. It'd be like saying, "I'm sorry, but you don't have to have handicap parking spots at any parking, in any parking lot." You don't have that capability as a village or as a planning commission, you can't do it. So, from first 10 words, it's already null and void because it'll be thrown out as soon as he votes, somebody challenges it. The thing is, it says, "Oh, you can't have this, can't have that." What is the number one use of short-term rentals? Hotels and motels. What you're saying is, if I want to come in and put a hotel or motel in some commercial, I don't know where you're going to put it, but that's beside the point. If you want to come in and apply for it, you can't do it because you cannot have short-term rentals anywhere in a village, whether it be commercial, industrial. It's exclusionary zoning, so the ordinance, while it's going to go, while it should go to council, council should immediately dump it. And there are a couple of commissioners or council members here, and just remember that it's, you know, it's a, it's a tough situation when you start excluding something from everything. So, that's all my, that's all my statement and comments are on that.
Steve, this was, in my view, this was a, this was a proposal in search of a problem. There is one or two being, uh...
Airbnb.
Airbnb's right down in the village. To the best of our knowledge, there's never been a complaint about them. Actually, the owner of the, the one was here and brought with him dozens of letters of people who raved about it. I think I voted against it before and I'll probably vote against it again. And I think the reason it didn't go to council is because we, I don't think we could reach an agreement to send it to council. I agree with what you're saying, but I, I think that this is a proposed, proposal that is searching for a problem and that there is not a problem. In some communities, there, this is, is a problem, Sagatuck perhaps, or Glen Harbor, or perhaps Port Austin, but this is not Port Austin, Glen Harbor, or Sagatuck. That's really all I've got to say.
Can I make something to that? I would just, if you look back at your, the meeting minutes that we had stapled to that ordinance, the language, we did have a public hearing on this language, the proposed, our planner, Ms. Laverre, reviewed it and drafted the language for us, and we had the opportunity to, to ask for questions and to express concerns. And there was a vote on it to approve, it says approve, the probation of short-term rental ordinance 46459 as presented. And the motion carried, there was a four to two vote to approve that language. So I think we're already, at this point, we're, we've done that part of it, we had the public hearing, we had the planner assist us with writing the language, and it was voted on to approve the language. At this point, the only thing that is missing from this is sending it to the board, which just needs us to, for that recommendation. I guess that's, that's where we're at with it.
Okay. Need a roll call on the motion?
Just...
To send it to council.
Motion is to forward it to council.
Yep.
The language has already been approved.
Justin Parker?
Yes.
Hall?
Hale?
No.
Mellon?
Yeah.
Minton?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Grandstaff?
Yes.
Bill Parker?
I don't want to be inconsistent, no.
Webb?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is the nomination and election of the officers for the planning commission, the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. Anyone want to raise your hand to take this position?
Jamie, correct us if we do this wrong again, but I would like to start with the nomination for Janice Fowler for the chair position.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
You accept?
If you accept. Yes, I would accept that nomination, thank you.
Anybody else?
Would there be any other nominations for chair?
Do we vote on, how, vote on them individually?
Yes.
Okay.
If that, if there's only one person, you can, you can just do a straight up or down vote, a vote, a boys' vote of all in favor. But if there's more than one, they have to...
All in favor?
Aye. Me oppose.
For vice chair?
I would like to nominate Lisa Hall for vice chair. No?
I'd like to nominate Steve Mellon for vice chair.
Thanks, buddy.
I'll support that.
I'd second that.
Yeah, I'll support it. You accept?
What's that?
Do you accept?
I accept, even though I'm a smack.
Who's second?
I did.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, secretary?
I'd like to nominate Andrew Hale for secretary.
I'll second that. I thought Andrew was moving out of the village.
I did.
You are?
I did. There's language within the village.
He can maintain his seat.
Can he?
Yes.
How?
It's been discussed. It's in there. We can talk, I mean, we can pull the language out later, but it's, it's allowed.
Okay, I'm...
I made a nomination.
Cameras are on and I'm going to admit in front of my wife, "I can't hear you guys."
I made a nomination to nominate, or I nominated Andrew Hale, was seconded by Brian Minton. He accepted.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Our recording secretary? You got it.
I'd like to appoint Sarah Croft.
Court.
I'm sorry.
Second?
As the recording secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It was your, it was your chance, but you didn't. Uh, last item is planning consultant?
That's Ms. Karen Laverre.
If I could ask before we move on, is, are we contracted with her for a certain amount of time? Or is her contract off?
The contract's not up. We are contracted, I don't know for how long or if it's just a perpetual. We'll have to look into that.
I'd like to make a motion to keep Ms. Karen Laverre on as long as her contract is valid with the Village of Romeo.
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item D, SLU application discussion vote tabled from May 1/25/6525, and it's back on the 273 Chandler Street Bed and Breakfast.
Are we opening?
You have, you have something to say, I think.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the village and, and it's not for common, I'm speaking on behalf of the village as if Karen was here and me and Mike are here to speak to you guys.
I wasn't questioning you. No, no. I know we were opening it up.
Yeah. I wasn't here last month, the president read my, my report. I want to be explicitly clear, nowhere in my report did I insinuate or infer that a bed and breakfast cannot exist there, just that we are wildly out of order in the process. I, I won't even give commentary as whatever way I feel it should go, but where we are right now, when, when we talk about assessing, for instance, yes, there is a building on the property, so assessing purposes, it's listed as a single-family residence. But by definition, with the state, it is over 50% gone, it is new construction. The ordinance is quite clear, but even if we look past what the ordinance says, it can't be constructed for a specific purpose, because that's a little subjective, the applicant himself said, stated his intentions. Intention, intent is a very hard thing to prove in court until the individual says the words themselves, like I outlined in my letter. "I intend to build it for this, I, we plan to build this." When Mr. Bomarito and I went through that place, it's a shell. If someone was living there, it'd be condemned. Active work has not gone on since 2023, there has not been a permit pulled at least since 2023. At the very least, and I came to you guys before and said, "I am a procedural guy. If our ordinances say that it can exist, then it has to exist. If it can't exist per the law, then it can't." But this is not a single-family home. We have our building official right here, and I'll speak for him, and, and he can come up as well, but he wouldn't give a C of O in its condition, putting someone in there to live there with a bathroom that has no wash facilities, it's just a bathroom, no bedroom, no plumbing really throughout the house. The electrical, to call it rough is a very liberal use of the term. I have pictures that I can show you guys. The third floor is a complete build-out. The second floor has three rooms of, I think there were going to be, what, five up there? Or four plus a master suite. The master suite does not exist, one of the bedrooms, o, only three walls exist, no bathrooms exist up there. Everything is a build-out, and I can appreciate, you know, being a businessman myself, I can appreciate trying to hedge your bet, I get it. But it just, we're wildly out of order, you are leapfrogging this process. And it's been stated by, by other residents, and I think I said this at the, at the board meeting, and, and, you know, Mr. Parker and I discussed it at the board meeting, legislation is hard, guys. Your job, though, is to make a decision. Do not be bullied into making a decision. Nothing in our ordinance, in the Planning Enabling Act, the Zoning Enabling Act, states that anybody is entitled to a full board. Matter of fact, all of those laws state, as long as there is a quorum, you guys are a board and are to conduct business. It's simple, you don't get all, everything you want. You don't get to count your votes and think, "Oh, if I just keep kicking this down the line." There has been considerable time and resources on the village behalf. I can see if anything had changed, this is the same application from a year ago. The difference is, you guys didn't know what was going on in there, and Mr. Bomarito and I finally said, "Wait a minute, there's a lot of questions here, let's go check it out." So, I, I know where I'm at, and like I said before, could I administratively pull this? Yes, but you guys, again, respecting your time and the resources that have been spent on this, I wouldn't do that to you. You guys can rule on this, this probably should have been pulled administratively because it does not meet any of the requirements, and, you know, it, it is what it is. And like I said, I'm not saying a, a, a bed and breakfast can't exist, but don't get wrapped up in, "Oh, well, it's going to be beautiful when it's done," and bravo for, for building it out. I appreciate it too. I appreciate preserving history here, but get your C of O, get your certificate of occupancy, and then get your SLU. There is so much that needs to go on there. And, you know, if this keeps getting kicked down, then next month I'll bring the photos and everything. And I don't know, Ms. Bomarito, do you have anything to add to that?
I'll defer to Mike Bomarito, our, our head of building.
Hello, Mike Bomarito, building official, Village of Romeo. The current condition is not habitable, somebody cannot live there. If he brings in all the construction documents sealed, meets all the current code requirements, builds it out, gets a C of O as a single-family residential, once it's issued, at that point, you know, the bed and breakfast would be allowed by state law. The thing is, I, ordinance clearly reads you cannot build to be a bed and breakfast, and I think that's where, that's not Building Department, but that thinks that's where the ordinance requires it to be. Not built to be, and I don't understand why they can't just bring in all the sealed drawings, build it out, put the residential in there, finish it up, has a C of O, and then that's like Mr., you know, well, Sarah was, "Come on in and for the SLU." At that point, you know, it's, I have nothing to do with that part, that's the planning commission, and if the law allows it. But at this point, it is not habitable, and I think the problem lies that that's what it's going to be built as.
Mike, does it say something in the ordinance that it has to be habitable?
To occupy a building, sure it does, it's in, not known as...
The ordinance says that you, you, you can't build a building and then have a B and B, period. True?
I'm not sure about the way you're saying...
But that's not what Mike's here to say.
That's not what I said.
Mike's a building official, he's not, has nothing to do with the zoning ordinance.
I'm just saying, I think that's where you're... I'm just saying, I think that's where your stalemate is right now. The ordinance, that's nothing to do with me building, I said. If he's building it, I think is where the stalemate is. They're saying he's building it to be a bed and breakfast. And I think that's where the ordinance says you can't build.
I think he's building it to be a B and B. I think there's a building there.
Right. And that's all I'm saying is he needs to, the, it's not habitable right now. It's a shell. He needs to come in with construction documents sealed. He needs to file all the code criteria for mechanical plumbing, electrical and building. He can build it out, get a certificate of occupancy. Once that's issued, take it from there. Maybe, um, if that's not stating it that way, I don't know. I'm not getting involved with P and Z or that decision. All I'm saying right now, it's not habitable to be living in. It's a shell.
I understand that. I totally agree with you.
Okay.
And I, I know that you've been involved in the building business for a long, long time. And I know perfectly well that you know that there is a lender in this, in the entire United States that's gonna loan money to finish that thing out until he's got all of his approvals in hand. It is common, and you know that for a fact, that lenders will require some form of, like, these guys are here for a marijuana thing. They wanna know that, yeah, you, you can get your approval in order to borrow the money to finish the building out. That's common and that's the normal order of business. The guy is here owning a building. And we, we, we do all recognize the fact that he owns it. He spent some considerable money at his own business and his own reasons. And I don't know that there are any of our reasons that he did or has done what he has done. But it's there and he's looking for an approval, but will the Village of Romeo allow him to have a B and B there?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it has to be built out. He gets a C of O. What you do with the zoning, that's up to this board. And as far as building, um, there is new construction loans all the time for homes that don't even exist with no building there. People go out and they get a construction loan.
I agree with you.
And that, that he can get, I guess. I'm not getting into contractual. Monetary has nothing to do with me. I have to enforce the building code. That is my job here.
That building is going to have to be built out at current code.
Code, yes.
I mean, from A to Bleeping, whatever.
You're exactly right. There may be a few, uh, different exceptions he may get, existing structure, but very, very, very minor. It's pretty much, it's a hundred percent coming to code for the condition it's in.
I can't think of where you would give him any variances unless maybe the height of a window, which is already there.
There's, like I said, maybe a very minimal exception, maybe.
You need plants.
I have to have construction drawings sealed by an architect with mechanical plumbing. You know all that too, Bill. You've built too.
Yes, I have.
I know. So, um, and that's all I'm saying is.
Thank you, Mike.
Building department, that's what I need.
Mr. Bomarito, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So because it's not fifty percent built out, is that the reason it requires another C of O?
First, it would require it even after fifty percent when you're doing a renovation with, let's just say the house was at seventies, like, over fifty percent and it was habitable, you know, and they were living in there, never was vacant, you know? At that point, um, they'd have to meet code to whatever they're touching, you know, areas that they weren't touching, the existing structure code gives them some allowances.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
If the Michigan Residential Building Code requires a C of O, if it's more than fifty percent.
Absolutely. Then it kicks it in, or kicks it out of the rehab and right into the full residential code, yes.
Thank you.
If I could address just one thing. If the plans submitted to you guys did not say bed and breakfast, and these are just my plans, then maybe I, 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 I could see the argument. It's being built for a bed and breakfast. That's what the plans were submitted for. If they didn't say bed and breakfast and were just plans and these are nine bedrooms, it's being constructed as a bed and breakfast. And so.
It wouldn't even be here. That was about the plans. It's about a special land use for air, for a B and B, I'm sorry, for a B and B in a residential district. That is why it's here. It's because they're asking to construct something in a residential district. That's why it's here. It has nothing to do with the plans. That there, it's why it's here. It's because they want a special land use permit. That's, our only concern is the special land use.
A gentleman would like to speak.
You would like to speak, I take it.
You are correct. Thank you. And, uh, we're pleased that there's a, a full planning commission. Um, we appreciate that very much. I know that, uh, at least if my recall is correct, all of you at some point have, have, uh, heard myself and my client, Mr. Wells, my immediate right, uh, speak about this. And I, I understand that, uh, there are mixed opinions. At least based on previous comments made from members of the planning commission as well as members of the audience. I think it's important to note that, um, and, and I, I'm not here to have a tit for tat with anyone. But the, the, it was a comment made that the, the plans as drawn, and they are proposed. My client willingly allowed, uh, village officials in because he's not trying to hide anything. He's somebody that wants to be a part of the village, is a part of the village, wants to bring something to the village that he thinks would be an asset to the village. And there was a comment that, well, because it says it's for a B and B, it's built for a B and B. But if it didn't say B and B, well, then it could just be a single-family house. I think that comment sort of typifies what we're looking at. I, I, I don't want to say things are being misconstrued, but I think there's an effort to expand on definitions that quite honestly are not defined. Um, specifically the construction. The construction in the interior of the property, um, I would argue, and I, I, I've voiced this before. And I believe, uh, that your own counsel said it in this same forum several meetings ago. And that is that the construction that, uh, and he didn't say it this, this directly. So I, I don't want to, uh, tell you that I'm quoting your counsel. But that the construction that is mentioned or not specifically constructed for this purpose relates to, um, in, in my, I guess I'll just say my opinion, cause again, I don't want to attribute comments to somebody that I'm not directly quoting. But it pertains to changing the structure itself, expanding the footprint, adding what, because what, what we all know is a typical residential, single-family structure is gonna have two bedrooms, on average, three, maybe four, maybe some, you know, maybe five in a unique situation, but we have an older home. And quite honestly, it was designed to have more bedrooms. There was many discussions from even members of the planning commission as to prior uses and the amount of people that were actually housed in that building. The construction that's been proposed and, and, and we respect everything that's been said by, uh, members of the village staff. Specifically that my client is proposing this use. There's a proposed floor plan. But in case there's any question, my client fully understands that he would have to obtain approval for drawings, full construction drawings. He'd have to obtain permits. He'd have to obtain a certificate of occupancy. Um, if there was any thought that, that he didn't believe that, I want to be clear about that. But I'm not aware of anything and I haven't heard it yet and I haven't heard it from your counsel. I'm not going to tell you it doesn't exist, but I can tell you I'm not aware of it. And that is a requirement that, uh, the house be fully constructed, that there be no construction to be done um, when an application is made. And so, uh, unless someone has something to inform me of, and, and I, I'm, I'm being sincere. If you, if you know of something, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to look at it. But to the extent I'm aware, there is no requirement that there be an existing certificate of occupancy, that the home be move-in ready, and then you can apply for a bed and breakfast. I'm not aware of that being a requirement. I didn't see any requirement from your planner, someone that you've hired, that you've agreed to continue with. Somebody that, uh, that's what they do for a living, quite honestly. They know it better than me. So I, I, we're happy to answer questions. I, I, I don't want to belabor what's been discussed previously. But I, I feel like there's these suppositions about, well, you can't, you can't, you have to do this before you can come back and apply. You have to do this before you come back and apply. You can't even apply until you get a C of O. And, and I appreciate the commentary about occupancy, um, but I don't think that's relevant to the application that's before you. The floor plan is relevant. All the questions that were answered are relevant. All the drawings that were provided are relevant. But the fact that it doesn't have a certificate of occupancy right now, I don't believe is relevant to your vote. With that, I'm happy to answer questions and of course, my client is here and he's happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. You may sit down.
I sit a lot. I thought I might stand for a little while. I'd just like to address one thing. Much like yourselves, our planner and our counsel, village attorney, did not know the condition of the interior. State law, again, over fifty percent equals new construction. I'm not, this is not a commentary against Mr. Wells. This is simply, it's not an interpretation. It is what the state defines it as. If, if I may, um, when, when you say it's, when you say it's defined as new construction, are you talking about if my client were to obtain a permit to do the work that's been proposed, he would obtain a new construction permit or would he obtain a remodeling permit?
I, I defer to.
Mr. Bomarito?
You'd have to get a building permit, again, like I mentioned earlier, with full construction drawings sealed. He's gonna need, on those construction drawings, even the square foot is over thirty-five percent habitable. Have to have mechanical, mechanical plumbing, all on it with the current codes.
Okay.
And that, and that's not where the problem lies. We could issue that permit with those construction drawings. I have no problem issuing that. And Mr. Wells has never stated that he didn't want to submit those drawings. So far as I'm concerned, I speak for building department of what my requirement is. As far as anything else that's, if he's applying for a SLU for a bed and breakfast, see, your building is specifically for, see, I'm sure I'm, I, it's not my department. Me and Mr. Wells know that he has to come up to the current code. We've been through there and he has never disagreed with that. So that's why, just in my, my right now, you're bringing all the construction drawings. Bill, you have your C of O, go from there.
Mr. Bomarito, if, if I may, uh, Mr. Bomarito.
Yeah, this, this is a conversation that came up in, in the office with the building department. This is not a conversation for this.
Then I may I direct, may I address the board directly? The permit that you pulled, the permit that's pulled for the work that's been proposed is a remodeling permit. It's not a new construction permit. Nope.
Alright.
So I, I just, I just think there's being, and it, it's, it's frustrating to my client and to me that members of the, the village staff would show up, but I want to be clear. If, if you pull a permit for the work to be done, it's a remodel. It's not new construction.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright.
May I speak? I just wanted to, Dale Wells, the owner of two seventy-three Chandler. All the permits have been taken out on this for everything we've done so far. And I, I don't understand why I have to finish a property before I get approval for the use I want. I mean, that just doesn't make sense. You need to be approved for the use before you finish the project. I mean, I, I think these are technical issues that, um, that your clerk is personally involved in this that doesn't want it.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright.
We need to take a vote on this. A, I need a motion, uh, for an SLU application for two seventy-three Chandler Street. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, Bill.
What are you saying?
I'd like to make a motion for, and I, I'd like to, cause I wrote this down. That considering the, both the history of the subject property and our own review of the applicable, applicable standards for review of special land uses for which affirmative votes for six of the items were made and the other two were tied. And I'll interject, I wasn't here because my wife wanted to go to London. Otherwise it would have passed. That we approve the special land use for a bed and breakfast subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner provide to the Village of Romeo an acknowledgement that the property can only be used as a bed and breakfast establishment for the housing of transient guests and not as an event center. Such statement shall be signed, witnessed, notarized and in recordable form that is approved by the village attorney. Two, that revised site plan be submitted showing no more than nine rooms to be rented for the purpose of housing said transient guests. And three, that a revised site plan be submitted showing no more than thirteen parking spaces. If you want to pass that down, I can give it to you later, but, or I can read it all again, but I, I have it all typed out. My reasoning on that, uh, I've heard a lot of comments about the fact.
It needs to get seconded.
Okay.
Okay, anybody want to second it?
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second.
Can I make some more comments?
At this time, yes, right.
I've heard a lot of people say, oh my God, Dale's gonna sneak in there, uh, an event center. Heard that repeatedly. And the other comment I heard was, by God, it's time that we had something like that in the village. Now, the village does have a history with B and Bs. Mike shut one down, didn't you, Mike?
I never shut.
Well, you, you said, you said you cannot.
Bill, let's keep it to council. We're not, we're not enter.
He said it can't be used as an event center, so the people gave it up. Okay, that's, that's my reasoning for putting that in there. Well, we, 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 we all talked about that. I mean, he doesn't need more than thirteen parking spots. But that's just bringing it down so that there won't be any confusion about using it as an event center. And there's also been the, the, the comments about too many, uh, rental rooms before. So again, I said, you've got to give us specifically nine rooms for the transient guests. And you can get a copy of the stalemate whenever you want. And, uh, yeah.
Alright.
And you would sign a document saying that's in recordable form and added to the deed that you're not gonna have an event center there. Okay?
Alright, we have a motion and we have a second.
I would like a roll call.
Any other discussion?
What?
Does anyone else want to have discussion before we?
I'm sorry, do you want?
So I, I did.
No, I don't have any discussion. You guys have discussion. Any questions? Comments?
No. No, I thought, I thought Brian was getting ready to talk. I have seven questions.
Alright, we're ready for a quote.
Webb?
Yes.
Yes, is that what he said? Grandstaff?
No.
Paul?
Yes.
Bill Parker?
Yes.
Fowler?
No.
Hale?
No.
Minton?
No.
Justin Parker?
No.
Mellon?
No.
No.
What is your vote?
Read the results.
So it's, one, two, three, four, six noes and three yeses.
Thank you for your consideration.
Do you need a motion to have it denied now? Otherwise, it stays there.
Bill, you're talking, but I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I, do we need a motion to have it denied now or is it gonna sit there on the table?
No, I think we need to finalize.
I will make a motion to deny the special land use as presented.
I'll second.
Second.
I would. I, I, yeah, I feel, based on counsel's recommendation on this matter before, if it is going to be a motion for denial, there has to be reasonings attached to that motion so that it is upheld.
All right. I will amend my motion. All right. I make a motion to deny the special land use request, um, specifically, I'm always gonna walk it in there. I'm sorry. I thought it was ready. Um, this would be specifically addressing, um, the forty-six dash one five three one A. The rooms utilized for lodging purposes shall not be part of the primary residential use. It shall not have been specifically constructed for rental purposes.
Will you continue support?
I will continue support.
Do you accept the question?
Yes.
All right. We need to vote on that then?
Minton?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Hale?
Hale, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hall? Justin Parker?
Yes.
Bill Parker?
No.
Fowler?
Yes.
Grandstaff?
No.
Webb?
Yes.
Mellon?
No.
So four noes. Five yeses.
Could you read the motion so everybody knows what was, what went down?
Yes. Uh, Janice Fowler made a motion to deny the special land use request in regards to the section she wrote up. I was gonna have to look that up just to, um, section forty-six.
One fifty-three.
One fifty-three with the rooms utilizing lodging purposes and rental purposes. I didn't know if you wanted to reread that little part again?
I can reread that.
Okay, thank you. Um, it would be one A, um, bed and breakfast establishments. The rooms utilized for lodging purposes shall be part of the primary residential use and shall not have been specifically constructed for rental purposes.
Counsel, do you have any question about that? Oh, we're not, we're done.
All right.
We tabled next month.
We tabled new business ten A. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Special land use. We're ready for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Oh, you wanna do that, huh? All right. All those in favor?